That.
We're calling to order the Lincoln City Council meeting. Today is today, November twentieth, twenty twenty five at six P M. And I think we can't be in relation. Pastor Nelson.
Just reading from Psalm forty three. The Lord of hosts is with us. The God of Jacob is our refuge. Come behold the works of the Lord. See what desolations he has brought on the earth. He makes wars to cease to the end of the earth. He breaks the bow and shatters the spear. He burns the shield with fire. Be still and know that I am God. I am exalted among the nation. I'm exalted in the earth. The Lord of hosts with us. The Lord of Jacob is a refuge. Let's pray. Lord God, as we approach the season of Advent, which is about the coming of you into our world. We pray that you will be with us. Fill us with your Spirit, Lord, that we may speak with honesty, integrity, but most of all with love. We pray that you will guide us in our decisions. Guide us in our ways. Guide us in your words. We pray all this with your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. You can stand to the pleasure of the audience. We, Atlanta, need to unify the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, one God, in which there is all liberty and justice for all. Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Councilwoman Arthavia.
Here.
Councilwoman Davis.
Here.
And Mayor. And first on is the agenda approval. Is the, uh, I make a motion to amend the agenda and remove number eleven from the agenda.
Well, second. We have first by Councilwoman Davis. Second by Councilwoman Johnson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye both. So moved.
And Tonya, can we, um, have that on to the next meeting to shift in case? Thank you very much.
Number six, we have the consent agenda and then we have the November sixth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes and then November. First by Councilwoman Johnson.
All second.
Second by Councilwoman Davis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And so moved. And now is the time for public comment. Public comment can be on anything on the prior agenda, like my agenda. Second call. Third and final call. Saying that we'll move on to, uh, City of Lincoln Project update updates. Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Uh, Tammy, can we make sure our mics are connected? I don't think they're. No, it's just out of the stars. Turn off. Thank you.
No, I can just all day. There we go. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Like to give you an update on our engineering projects. The rate study has been shared with city staff and is looking for any kind of questions or clarifications to that. Uh, once we have worked with you through all your questions and clarifications, they'll be finalizing the documentation and formally closing out that project. Same pretty much goes for the payment management program. That information has been shared. Again, any kind of questions or feedback regarding the payment management update project? Have to say that that information, uh, along with the rate study has been shared with, um, our program or rates. Uh, water birth, I believe is it? Um, and so I'm looking forward to utilizing that information, um, and using the information we received from the payment management program to build our C I P project. Once those, if that information is in a good spot with everyone, we will be working to close that out as well. Then we have the wastewater update. Uh, that project, I reached out to Apex Engineering Group. Um, they're working on, uh, proceeding with the standalone mechanical wastewater treatment facility. They are working with Director Shute and, um, Mister, I hope I say this right, Goal Aid, Goal Ad.
Well, daddy. Well, daddy.
Anyway, uh, to look at a treatments, uh, planned option, system options with the goal of selecting treatment technology by the end of December. They are also working, uh, with Attorney Roganby to clean up the contract with the agreed upon changes and getting that final document to the city for signatures. And Ms. Olson is working to pull together a city group to meet on the project. Anticipate, anticipate that to include Director Shute, Brandon, Councilman Shoemaker as the portfolio holder, myself at a minimum and would hope that anybody else that has interest from the board or city staff to sit in on that board would let me know and I will add them to that group. Uh, for any more information regarding that project, you can sure reach out to me or Carla Olson with Apex Engineering. Any questions regarding the project?
That I can help with.
All right, pretty short. Thank you.
Uh, third party standard greatest of it. Councilman Shoemaker.
I have not heard, not received a, uh, bit back from, uh, the firm, consulting firm that, um, forms these kinds of analysis. And not to say that we have to use the third party firm, it was, they, they've conducted research to, to, uh, and they have, um, battery of data already that they could use to, to give us some accurate numbers. Right now we are comparing against the Fargo and might not larger cities that may not be a good representation on where we should be. So I'm attempting to reach out and get that bid to see what it would cost, that's, I'm the most efficient effective way to, to, to give us some guidance or maybe.
Would it make sense to, uh, in order that it's, but I, they have counsel said a max? I guess I don't know even what the costs would be associated to it, to just go ahead and say, hey, this is people comfortable within this range to go ahead and do that. So we don't then come to another month before having such.
I personally don't feel, uh, okay, we're putting the number on just because I don't know. So I, I, yeah, I don't feel comfortable myself in putting a number on because if I don't know where that number is.
We did send maximum and let this firm consulting firm know that maximum, then they come back and say, right, we're, we're, we're in ballpark. We moved, we investigated further. That would at least, that's the long issue.
alleviate.
Was there only one firm that you found so far that handles this type of?
Yes. I could say we couldn't look ourselves, uh, look for data ourselves at other cities that are more representative of our, our size and hoping to be here in the city of Lincoln.
When I, we approved a limit of five thousand for the logo. You know, I mean, I don't know. It's our hands, but I guess we should not. All right. Take the war and, uh, get some number that maybe too we can ourselves look, right, and come up and, and see uh, if we have any numbers that might shoot out. Well, that we did. As far as cost. Right, yeah. All right, well, more to come. One doubt. Number twelve, the public hearing for the final plan, bridge, third edition, uh, number eight. He skipped, he skipped a little bit. So, oh my gosh. I saw you had yourself.
You're trying to speed along.
No, I, I crossed out number eleven, so I just saw the cross out. Uh, so eight, so number nine, employee take home vehicle and K nine policy.
Chief, the plan was he had to have chief here to answer some questions. I did see him step in, but he must have had to step out again. I didn't check. Maybe we can bump this out a little bit.
Welcome, Chief.
Good morning, good evening, good afternoon. What can I help with today?
I think the main question that the council had on the last meeting was what type of scenarios do you foresee officers having in these four takeaways?
So the only time we would assign a permanent individual is if they're in a special position. So, um, the one that I'm thinking of right now, the only person has take on car is our K nine. And that's because it's specifically set up, no one else can use it. It's got a cane, you know, the cage in there, it's got a heat sensor, it's all that stuff. So therefore, no one else can utilize that vehicle. The only time it unplanned or unscheduled one would occur would be something along the lines of, well, someone, we only have one officer on, uh, a ship per show. Someone's working overnight, but they call in sick. Um, I reach out to Officer Sauer and say, hey, any chance you could run this, the, the PD pick up a squad? Um, and just heavy on standby in case an emergency comes. Um, and that would be unplanned, unscheduled. We're not assigning vehicles to all officers. Not everyone's taking vehicles home. If it is, it's because of an emergency type situation where, you know, I think we had one who was on training, so he had to be on call. So he was authorized to take one home for the shift. So that way, if a call came out, he'd respond emergent and then be available for the calls.
So, uh, Chief, Councilman, uh, with the vehicle use policy, right? We're only putting it under for the canine, right? Or take home?
So that is, here's what the proposal is, I believe that's been there. Yes, that version. I'm asking, don't change it. No one is getting assigned vehicles except for our canine, our canine handler is assigned a vehicle because of the sole purpose of the specifications of, of what's needed in it. The only other time someone would get assigned a vehicle is if we ever got a detective back and that would be for responding to calls for service. Um, if an officer calls about, I tell you in the year I have been here, I've been called out three times to respond overnight. So it's not a huge number, so therefore I don't anticipate seeing that. Um, the biggest thing would be is what is it that you guys are looking for? Do you want to be the approvers of the, um, take home vehicles or do you want the knowledge of it? Um, because the, by changing and or eliminating all other areas of the policy that we currently have in place prohibits me from being able to say at eleven o'clock at night, hey, I need you to take a vehicle home because so and so is went homesick. Can you come pick it up? So in case an emergency call comes on that you can respond. Um, that would eliminate that ability for me to do that because we're pulling it out of this, uh, out of there. I have no problem bringing to council everything that we are doing when it comes to vehicles. Um, I know the big concern is we want to know where our vehicles are, we want to know why they're where they are. Um, and I agree, I want you to know that. Um, but at the same time, by eliminating the policies that we already have in place, it one hundred percent prevent, prevents me from being able to um, authorize at a moment's notice if I need to get a vehicle to an officer. I have no intentions of assigning specific vehicles to all authors. Uh, we still only have five vehicles, um, and one of them is the Tahoe. And I think we all know how I feel about the Tahoe. Um, so in reality, we still only have four vehicles. Uh, and so those need to be utilized during our shifts. So again, the canine handler has his because none of us can use his, um, due to the fact that it's, it's set up for the, for the canine. Um, everyone else, it's a matter of they come in, they are assigned their vehicle. What that means is that Officer Edwards is assigned squad two. Needs a sign squad two because his counterpart, Officer Sauer, works the exact opposite shift of him so that we're not running a vehicle twenty four hours. So when we say assigned vehicles, that's what we're doing with the assignment of vehicles. But if we ever got to a point, um, where we were to say, yep, we need, uh, more officers to be able to have a take home vehicle, that is something that would be discussed down the road. Uh, no other officers, I'm not taking a, a vehicle home. I haven't been taking a vehicle home since probably September or August, uh, mainly because my kid's in school and then I gotta turn around and drive back home, pick up the car and then it defeats the purpose. And so again, the only times we would be taking a vehicle home or assigning it to an individual would be in a, an emergency type of situation. Um, but also giving me that autonomy to be able to say, okay, well, this isn't an emergent situation. I understand that we need to have take the vehicle home so that you can go, um, go home early because you have training at eight A M, but you were supposed to work till six A M. Um, take it home at midnight. Be on call. If a call comes out, you have to respond and they can respond. That's when it would potentially go to someone who lives in Bismarck. Um, Officer Schneider, uh, is currently in the process of trying to get back across the river to the good side. Um, not saying anything about Bandan, but this is the good side of it. Um, and so.
So, uh, Chief getting started catching you off.
Yep.
Um, but with the layout of the cars that with the canine, that leave you three then?
Correct.
Okay, and then.
But the Tahoe still works. It's just sometimes she wakes up and she's not happy. And then she has lots of Christmas tree lights on on the, on the dash, um, which is why most of our guys don't like using it, um, and we try, we're trying to, we were trying to sell it. So yes, we have three vehicles, um, and all the officers are assigned as a primary and or a secondary to that. But none of them get to take them home except for our canine.
Right. Um, and then you also mentioned policy takeaway. I, I don't think in any of us on council want to take away the policy or even change the policy at all. Um, so I hope you're not in a fear of that because if, if what we have right now works, great, if there's something they need to add in to give you more leeway or, you know, then bring that to us and then we can look at it, but we don't want to take away, right? Uh, that, that's not my understanding as council member.
I absolutely want you guys to be aware and know what is being done with the, with the resources. Um, because I think that's an important piece. Um, and I know Derek and I have a good relationship going back and forth, contacting, and I can do a better job at making sure that he's aware, but in I also don't want to send a message at eleven o'clock at night saying, hey, FYI, someone's taking a vehicle home. Um, I hope that you have enough trust in the, the decision that I make as to why there's a vehicle currently sitting in Bismarck. Um, and it's two in the morning. And it looks like it's outside of a residence. By all means, I encourage not only our council members, but our community to call me. Like I'm, I'm always available for, for a talk to let them know how things are going and why the vehicle was there.
Yeah. I, I think it would just be a good idea to state within policy, uh, if there is any type of an emergency and however you want to word that, to put it in the policy to say it that way. And then if for any reason, you know, things happen in such a way that it doesn't follow the policy, that there will be, you know, some sort of, uh, report to explain why that decision was made.
So it, it does happen there, the unscheduled or unexplained reasons why it would need to be, a vehicle would need to be taken on. Um, so we do have that section in there and it really comes down to if something happens and it, it is, uh, for the betterment of the department and the community, um, then it would, it can only come through me to be authorized, um, from our officers and it would have to be, they'd have to be able to get ahold of me and say, hey, this is what's going on. Can I take the vehicle home for the night? Um, and it doesn't happen that often. Um, so there should be wording in there currently that would give us that leeway for the emergency type situations.
And do you have any other, um, comments or concerns you want to add?
I would say my feelings on it is that, uh, I feel it would be appropriate, I mean, some of the more permanent situations like K nineteen. Be set up and the council be aware of the approval for that. And then if there are, um, spur of the moment situations where it calls for it, I'd feel it'd be appropriate to allow the chief to make that determination and then to make sure that the portfolio holder is informed that following. Just so that the council can be aware of any kind of situations that are arising, if they become a regular situation that needs to be addressed. Or beyond that. I guess that's kind of what I think.
Uh, Councilman Bjornstead, I definitely agree with that too. Just because as well, um, as citizens reaching out, right, or having concerns or seeing it and being, so we know, right? So then we can best respond. We're not passing it on to somebody. I'll be like, well, why? Because we don't know. And then we look like we're doing our jobs. So, and because we've, and we've had that happen. And I think that as portfolio holders, you need to relay information to council, not just take it because you're the liaison from the department to the council. And if you don't share the information, we don't know, we're not informed. So it is wonderful to share with the portfolio holders. But I don't know if there's a better way to do that to ensure, because we do get concerns from council and I had shared that with you, you know, or from, from the community. And, and if we say, I'm sorry, you're going to have to call the office to figure that out. We look uninformed. We look silly. That, that, that we're not aware of what's going on. We're not micromanaging. We're not saying we need to check with each and every person and probably need to be aware. So I, I appreciate you to be. And so the last meeting, it was talked about that, um, the only take home vehicle that was desired was going to be canine. So is that changing now to where we revert back to this? As of right now with those, track changes in there, it just makes reference to the canine. Do you want the canine in there? Or just revert back specifically to the original and make no reference of the canine? Uh, Chief Giddings, have you seen this one?
Yes, I have.
Are you okay with it? Is there anything that you would like to change or add?
I, I personally would prefer for it to just say where it is. So if the canine is where it is, um, because if we ever get to a situation again where we don't have a canine program, say, say we decide, you know what, Franger, it was just too much work. We don't want to deal with it. Um, and we, we decommission our canine program, then I don't have to go back and explain that, well, we don't have a canine program, so therefore we don't have to worry about this. But if it's in canine, um, policy section, that whole policy section could be decommissioned and pulled out. Um, it references in the canine section that the, uh, canine handler um, has to abide by all the policies that fall underneath, um, our vehicle use policy.
I don't think there's any indication why it was put to you. The other, so you can just, you know, your responsibilities, right? That we're, I'm on the three oh nine point four.
Correct. So if you go to page four, paragraph four.
Oh, in subsection two.
When, when operating the canine vehicle during travel to and from home, the officer shall comply with the requirements of policy seven oh three point four point two, which is one hundred percent the, you can't go and run errands and do this or that. And that being said, he is, he is authorized, um, like it was back beginning of October, he took them into the vet to get the vet checkup. One hundred percent to utilize the vehicle to take them here or there. Uh, he just asked me about getting him to the, to the groomers because he is shedding like a, like a wild animal and to get him groomed and everything like that. That'd be another one where it's, he's using it in the, in the portion of his duty, but he's not on duty doing those. He still has to follow those, the policies that fall underneath the seven oh three policy, um, which is why I like them separate because the canine stuff stays together. It addresses everything that's needed in the canine, uh, category, whereas let's say our population soars and we have to have other units that potentially have to have a take home vehicle. Um, you know, Officer Sauer, S R O, um, maybe he can potentially have a vehicle, um, so he can respond to school events if needed. We get to that point. By, by going through that process, coming here and saying, hey, um, we, we were able to seize a vehicle and we're going to turn it into our S O, our old vehicle. Or maybe, uh, Councilman Landis will, um, give us a really sweet car or something. I don't know. Um, but then we turn it into the S R O, that would, that's what would come to you guys now going forward to say, hey, FYI, this is what we have going on, um, with the assignment of a vehicle, um, the assignments of squads on a day to day operation solely falls under me saying, you know what, two is out, you can't use two anymore. You gotta get over to three. Um, so, um, my personal preference would be to leave as is. I have no problem putting, uh, some sort of wording in there that says, um, any permanent assignment, uh, of an officer to a vehicle, uh, needs to brought, be brought before the council. Like I, I, I am all for that. I don't have a problem with that. I also don't want to set a precedence of having to come to you guys every time like something comes up to be able to keep going, keep our, um, department operating. Um, but permanent, um, establishments of an individual in a vehicle, one hundred percent.
Makes sense. Council. Any other questions? So just to verify, last time we like policy three oh nine as is.
Yep, correct.
Um, if, if we wanted to add in the vehicle sentence that you graciously stated.
So that one, I think we would want to put into seven oh three.
The vehicle one?
Yeah, the vehicle use and where it would fall underneath, I'm gonna get to it. Um, uh, seven oh three point four, where it says individual member assignment to vehicles. Department, department vehicles may be assigned to individual members at the discretion of the chief of police, um, with prior knowledge of city council.
I was maybe saying prior approval.
I don't like the word approval. And the reason I don't like that word of approval is, um, again, that sets precedence where I have to come to you guys and get approval for every day, everyday operations that we do, whereas it's, it's coming to you and you guys are saying, okay, we're, we're this and we like it. We think it's good.
I may have misunderstood that. I guess I was thinking in reference to the permanent assignments.
Correct. If you guys want to approve stuff, then that's the wording that would be in there. If you want to be made aware of things prior to an assignment of a vehicle, um, that would also still have to come before you guys. And that's where you'd be able to go back and forth and say, you know what? We don't agree with this. Um, we don't want this. I just don't like the wording of approval in, in, in policy because again, it's, it's just, it gets mucky.
I will probably say, excuse me. My preference on this would be that the council would have approvals of permanent assignments. And then any of the spur of the moment assignments would need to be, uh, the portfolio holder would need to be informed within four hours. I feel like that would probably be a pretty smooth and clear route forward.
So that's then where I would throw it right at the end of that first sentence, um, at the discretion of the chief of police and with prior approval from city.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can, I agree. I agree with what you said, Councilman Bjornstead, and I also agree that, um, it would just create, we could cure from whichever department is being informed, you know, making sure that the rest of the council gave them on that to just like, so that. from whichever department is being informed, you know, making sure that the rest of the council gave them on that, to just like, so that we do understand that uh what's going on, if, if people are reaching out to us, asking a question.
Sure.
But we don't have to throw everything back to you all.
I would like to go on record there and say, that's what we're here for. Like, throw them back to us, because then we can answer all the questions, I don't expect you guys to know all of my policy. Everything in this.
But I think she meant office as in like city office, you know, normally when our uh cop started to pay off, normally when our calls come in, right? Or we don't know the answers, and, and unless we're a portfolio holder of the department, right? Why don't I say, okay, office, can I get a little more info on this? Right, Anne, is that what you were stating?
It could have been.
Yes.
No, you're okay, again, I, I send them to us, that's, we're here full time, that's what we're here for, let them ask us the questions, that way we can say, no, this is the reason we do it. Um, yes, our council is very aware, but we, we have an understanding between each other where we want you guys to come to us, ask us the questions, we have everything here for you that we can provide. Um, and then you guys can focus on going through my policy book, um, and looking through it and, and, and uh making sure that it's where it wants to be.
Perfect. Lana, do you have anything to add?
No.
I, I do have a question, um, so are you going to be making updates to this, or is the policy owner going to change on? Uh, amending the or what did I say?
Policy owner?
Oh, uh, to come back for final approval that next meeting?
Yeah, I would, I would be able to, I mean, I already have it survived on my computer, so, um, to say with prior approval from city council, uh, so all I have to do is hit save draft, um, in approval status, bring back uh for approval. You approve on it, and then it goes live to our guys and gives issue.
Sounds great.
Yeah, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, chief. All right, number ten. Duplication, fence ordinance.
I, in your package, I, what I did is what we talked about, I compiled all uh changes or amendments consolidated into one document, this way we can go step by step. Uh, look at who thought what, have discussions, so we can get this going to semi-formal final approval. Uh, and because the attorney said you know, very wisely, that if we go through the, the weeds, the verbiage can be corrected on, on legal side, so if everyone's okay with it, let's just start on the specifics uh within the sections. Now, just so you are aware though, uh if, if you look under section five, under purpose. I did track changes, so you are aware these are not my changes. They're just showing, and it automatically goes into red text when you make changes behind those, those are the initials of the individual that mentioned resulting that. And within the document itself, I have this in the council member or myself changes that for me. And so if, if everybody's okay, we'll start with the third section, landscaping and yard standards. And under that, uh, we have Councilor Narthavion, myself, Councilor Bjornstead, and Councilor Devenus. And Councilor Schumacher. Some of it we all agree on. Some we don't, so I'll take just a second and take a poll down there, um, I think everybody showed on here approval of that durable edging physical barrier. And is spray adhesive with the exception of Councilman Bjornstead?
Yeah, I think, I believe I just had the spray adhesive approved as being a requirement.
Could be durable edging, physical barrier, supporting the spray adhesive. Five, five, three, right, last thing, I'm going to mention, I never did. He has this on the second, no, he didn't. But like here, constantly changing it, um, both for spring, also, I, both of the spring, also, I see it's not on.
I was thinking that it actually wasn't mentioned somewhere, maybe.
I was looking, yeah, for a while here, so.
Maybe.
I don't think I added that. You did.
I did.
Did, I did. And I do have the office with, if, if anybody needs verification that I put what I was saying on.
There were a couple of mine that I saw weren't included, I really couldn't go all the way through.
I also need some changes to find the district to be, so we're not included.
Actually, if the, uh regarding the rocks in the yards. I first any news, or Justin's mad is, is I was thinking about it some more, and I feel like we may be overcomplicating this and reinventing the whole. I did some checking in our ordinances. I believe the main concern uh with the rock in the front yard uh is primarily with the public works and having rocks travel out onto the road. Causing issues with storm sewers, uh, clearing snow to potentially throw rock with the boulder, et cetera. We actually already have an ordinance in place that prevents people from, you don't push snow out into the streets. And the section right before that actually makes it against the ordinance for any kind of dirt, filth, sewage, sweepings, rags, dung, garbage, compost, wastepaper, straw, hay, weeds, brush, weeds, dry grass, boxes, wooden crates, lumber, stable manure, ashes, vegetables, or litter of any kind to be placed onto the property or placed onto city streets. I'm wondering, would it make more sense for us to just add loose aggregate to this ordinance? And then that would save the public works from having to do any kind of measuring to make sure people are following a, a particular rock size. It prevents us from having to question who was grandfathered in and who wasn't, five, ten, fifteen years south of the road. Uh, we aren't gonna have to try and determine, well, this person made a slight change here, do they lose their grandfather? Or this person did this, but they were okay, so why is it not okay for this person to do this kind of thing? I feel like it would make things far more straightforward, and we wouldn't have to have thirty different lines stating that this is okay here, this is okay here, but this isn't okay over here, so that, I just feel like it'd be a lot cleaner using an ordinance that we already have.
But yes, the, I'm sorry. Oh, I, I was trying to add, um, the garbage bins, right? I mean, nine times out of ten, they're against the curb, right? I mean, the whole town, it's just what we do, right? Now, I, I have never put it at the edge of my driveway, no, my parents, on the other hand, they do not play it in the street, and they, they put it at the end of their driveway. I've just always put it at the end of, of the curb, so I mean, we could find truth and go through that, I think, and, and definitely tweak some things for sure. And that probably would alleviate a lot of our funness of going through here and picking and choosing what it's what.
Well, I, I think it's taken the way we threw out, but I thought the intent, we're supposed to have one centralized location, so if any new, if they have questions for the residential, they look at the residential without digging through four or five different chapters to find what's applicable, because that's how we get into this situation there now with fences and um the rock unite.
I mean, this could just be included with the residential.
I was just gonna say that, yeah, we could, you were saying instead of doing the residential.
No, basically, this would just be in place of still rock part of there.
Right, yeah.
Just so we don't have to have a full section talking about rocks of this size are okay, but not this size, rocks this type are okay, but not this, you know? I'd feel like it would just.
Take that, put it in the residential.
Yeah, really simplifying.
Let me come out, yeah, without that.
Uh, that's five dash zero two dash zero two. Uh, subsection.
I would question then, because this also came about because of the rocks that were in the eastern. So I think that would be something that I would have to come through to this unless you
I think it's already had it in there.
Think this would be on a purpose for that, it would basically put it on the property owner that if they have any rocks in their front yard, and that rock travels out onto the street, they are responsible for it, and if it is found to be from their property, which I think in most cases should be pretty obvious if people have rock laying out in front of, where do they have rock in their yard? Then we go through the citations and any kind of findings or anything like that that would come from.
Yard. But in our ordinance, doesn't it say that you can't have rock in the eastern?
This would change that.
Change it to allow or change it to?
This would allow rock in people's front yards.
Oh.
Including the easement. But they are completely responsible for it, and if it is traveling out onto the street, and they can be cited and fined for it.
Right. Which is, yeah, probably, who would policy outrage, but we don't.
We're, we're trying to address all the rock in the yards and also establishing a grandfather yet. Is that what we're doing? So if we just say, no loose item, you have the boulevard. And then all the other rock in the, the person's property, you can use gravel, if you want, or if you want to do landscaping purposes.
Originally, this came because of those rocking in the east. You know, up until, and the individual had thought around that it would be the animal's uh, because of us. You know, so the question is, are you going to allow rock in the eastern? And if you are, is it going to be requiring, having, and barrier, whether that be a physical barrier or the need, spray, as you said.
Yeah, I'm fine with like a, a hard barrier for it, but the way I see it, we should allow people to use their yards how they would like to. But they are completely responsible, making sure it does not affect the street curb and gutter. If it doesn't travel beyond their yard. And if it does, then they would be cited for it.
Feel free to come to the committee. They say check.
Brandon, check mayor council on. I was, when I was on council, we talked about this, and it was one of Rob's big deals that when they would plow snow, the rocks that were coming out out of the yards, out of the boulevards and stuff were going out, and they were throwing the snowblower, which isn't safe. So that's why we did this, so I would really urge you guys to keep the rocks out of boulevards because it, it could cause some bad damage. You know, we get a year with a lot of snow, and you can't keep the rocks matter. And where are you gonna go? Make the guy pay a fine in the summer when you figure out who has the rocks? You know? Do you have an idea about how many times it actually posed the issue?
Well, just.
Well, I know we had problems with it gouging the street. Um, when they would lay it and stuff, the rocks would get caught under there and gouge the street, which costs money. Um, we know they threw rocks up in the air, cause you can see where they threw the rocks up in the yard, well, one grabs just the right way on a snowblower. What if it goes through somebody's window? What if it dents somebody's car? That was the big deal, why we did not want rocks in the boulevards, that is the only reason, you know? So, just, just to give you a little insight of why we did this.
So for um, the mayor for our city, right, the main shovel or sweep down the road is with a plow, which doesn't have uh, necessarily a snowblower on it every time, correct, Terry? Correct, so, so then, right, the street is cleared with a plow. That only stays the night and by the curb, like that doesn't get sprayed up.
It doesn't.
So then when they go and do the curves, they have control of where they spray. So no rocks has ever went past, not even the middle of my yard, and I've been out here for ten years, and we've had a lot of snow sometimes, so I get, but sometimes accidents happen, sometimes things go maybe where you don't want it to go. However, we have equipment that has a lot of control on where we put our snow. Um, so the, the rock thing for me uh, being an issue, I, I just don't see it, Bismarck does the same thing with cleaning, there's rocks up in the front, uh, it's a that, that's just not funny.
So with the city of Bismarck, they don't plow, well, they plow, they don't snow blow any curb lines. They don't, they don't snow blow any curb lines in residential areas. Um, so the reason that I am for not having the rock in the boulevard is for the simple fact of it could happen, not that it won't, or not that we haven't had it before, or this year, this year. Simple spur of the moment thing, it can happen. We got told to go mow a yard, I told them, no, I don't wanna mow the yard, because we can damage something. Second yard we go do, boom, we've replaced a siding, city's paying for it. And it was less than a foot away from the big bay window on the house. Just freak things that happened, am I saying it is always gonna happen? No, you've been out here that long, okay, that's fine, but the fact of it is, is the rocks in there, you wanna make it so the homeowner's responsible for them, that's fine. But who are we gonna have drive around and make, take pictures and have them serve? Cause we don't have enough guys for that.
Don't we already do that?
No.
No.
We do not. Because you can't track it, like, I have so many little rocks in front of my house, just from garbage trucks that get glass, like, I, I get accumulation in front of mine. And I don't got any rocks in mine, you know what I mean? So who's to determine where that come from? You know what I mean? Am I in violation then, cause I have loose rocks in front, but I have no rocks anywhere?
That's exactly it, we can't even, it's against ordinance to snow blow your snow into the road, but we still have citizens that do that. But we cannot, we cannot serve anybody a fine, because you don't catch them in the act. You don't see it happen, you don't record it, well, the cop can't go over there and tell anybody, because who did it? You see them snow blow their snow into the sky like God's supposed to take it back, but what do you do?
I think that would be causing more damage. Right, rocks flying that way with people trying to clean up the gutter, get the boulders and everything versus our own plows going through it.
Well, this, this came about the year we had a bunch of snow, and we did have issues with it, I mean, there was rocks, you could see where they got thrown in the yard and stuff, and I was like, we gotta quit allowing these guys, you know, because when you get a lot of snow, they're not, and they're not paying attention where they're pushing the snow either, they take their snow, they push it out on the curb. And if you grab it, that's the only reason we did, we didn't do it to make somebody mad or make things not beautiful, yes, rocks look nice, I mean, you go to cities in the desert, they have rocks right up against, but they don't snow blow. So that was the biggest reason why we did it, is to protect the city from damaging things, so, just so you guys know.
Madam Mayor, can I, I, I don't have any, I don't, I can confess that I have no knowledge about these issues with rock, like, whether you should allow it, shouldn't allow it. My only concern from kind of a legal standpoint is that
My only concern from kind of a legal standpoint is that. If you are allowing behavior that. Is likely to. Cause issues and your way of dealing with that is through enforcement mechanisms. Um. I'm not sure that's going to be a unique strategy for you, right? And then again, I don't know the substance of this, but um. You know, when I was saying, I was like, well, if you wanna keep it out of the boulevard, then you should. My thought was, well, that's the goal. You should have barriers, adhesive and ordinance that says you're responsible because. If the only thing that you're relying on is enforcement. Then you're talking about diverting personnel to exactly what Terry was saying. Who are you gonna cite? Who's going to be responsible for citing? Now that you cited them, where are you citing the initiative municipal court? Now you're paying. Your attorney to prosecute people for a municipal court violation. Okay, so you you cite them into court. They want a hearing in front of the judge. Well, now who's your witness? Right? So now the city's got, the city attorney's got to call witness. Probably a city piece of of somebody who works for the city. Who's gonna come, either the police or public works for somebody or the neighbor maybe, right? But. That process is um. Burdens up, I think. I mean, it's important enough, obviously you can do it, but I'm just saying that you should think about that as a strategy. Um, just because the law says you're responsible if it. Goes into the street, doesn't it mean that that is going to achieve your goal? I mean, you can get there through enforcement. But the transaction cost. Is high, I think. And again, I don't know if this is a good idea, but I'm not trying to talk about the substance. It's just really more. If your strategy is relying on legal enforcement, there's some. Costs. Both in time of your city workers and expensive of having lawyers. Prosecute those matters in this court. Now, if your fine is high enough, maybe it's okay, but. That's a bad. You know, that's then the city that is prosecuting somebody. And bringing them into court with the idea of finding them with sufficient amount. I mean, that also creates some issues, I think, in the city and so. That's, I think you need to think about that as a strategy.
And Director, we haven't find anybody since you've been Director for Rocks?
Only people, well, we haven't even fined anybody, no, but we have served citations on people that have put rock in the boulevard. That have to take it back out and they've all taken it back out. So, um, but other than that, we haven't served anybody citations or anything for rock being in the road. So.
So ultimately, the issue is not. The rocks themselves, it's rock in the easement. That flows into the street, so if we. Find a way to keep either the rock completely out of the easement. Or allow it in the easement under certain conditions, I whether that be the spray. Or.
Size.
Size.
Which I would prefer size more than anything.
And then we don't have to worry about it for stability, fines, that strictly, these are the rules. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I think consider, I think come up, my kind of a legal strategy, the other issue is, and the city's already seeing this. Because. Because of when the change was made and the way that the city is already enforcing its ordinances. You already have kind of a mixture where you're not really sure if people are within. What's allowable or they're not with what's, you know, what not allowed and it creates, again, administrative work to try to sort that out. If you change this. And you try it and it's not successful. And then you change it back. Like that's something I think you wanna think about. Carefully before you do it because then you have just exacerbated this problem because there'll be a period of time where. Everybody will be allowed to do this and then when you say you're gonna take it back, that can create some additional. Um. Burdens on the city. But again, I mean, I don't have an, I'm gonna be clear, I'm not trying to express an opinion on the substance of this because I don't know, I don't know enough about. Snow blowers and rocks and all of this, but just from a standpoint of. Administrative enforcement, I think you need to be careful about using that as your means of achieving your goal, if the goal is to keep. Rocks out of snowblowers, I I think that enforcement is probably not the strategy that's gonna be successful.
Well, especially since we haven't even. Used those resources. So if we're not following, right, our own statute. Then. Why haven't, right? Um, I think it would be. Easier to take it out and not have a fine on it, but then again, I don't know how. That implicates the city and a lot that goes over too, but. Again, if if public works. Hasn't and is not going out and finding people because there's loose rock in front of their house, you know what I mean? Then I think as a city, you really need to dig deep and look at this, then maybe we should just take that.
Take.
It's one of, I. The the, well, finding people for loose rocks, right? We're not going around. And and finding people, because that's what it states in there, right? Any loose rock in front of the house, you're subject to be fined, well. If we're not doing that. And and we haven't been doing that. Then I think it would be wise personally, the council member to take that out of that section and not add that in. To this.
I like the idea of addressing the. Rocks or any kind of aggregate in the easement, uh, rocks in the front of the yard, it's a kind of. Reaching. Um, but I think the simplest remedy would to say no aggregate allowed in the easement because as we build leakings for the future. Um, it's it's being proactive, not reactive. Uh, we we don't know which streets will be open in the future, so we need to construct accordingly to. For all possible scenarios.
And that was our intent, with exactly what you said. That was our intent with it, so.
Okay, so if and I'm. I I. The only caveat would be. When we have people that currently have. And I don't know if this is really something that comes up in Ask Part, is those that do currently have. In that easement for them to be allowed to spray so they don't have to remove it. Or how do we address that? If this is. You know, where we go just simply doesn't go in the easement, we'll keep it as is. Don't make exception for the two inch diameter, but we do have people that do have rocks in there, so how do we? Legally, don't we have to do it now? If that's something council wants.
I mean. You asking me how, like, how do we get uniformity?
Really, no, how do, how do we? The. Kind of the grandfathering process. To put it in here. Do we have to have something formal saying, okay, um? Nothing in the easement. Yes, if you've already got it in the easement, it's very definitely he's not, obviously, sort of thing, or. You know, to legally. Encourage people to do the spray. I don't know if I may be more obvious than we used to be, but.
So what I don't, what I don't know that I have. Working knowledge of is what the history is of of. This, right? So if there was a period of time. When you could landscape into the um. Into the easement. And then the city changed it so you couldn't. Landscape into the easement. Then, you know. The analysis would be whether or not that change. Um, is something that the city would be required to grandfather. City could, or so like that's that's like the first issue and of course the city could say, we are going to grandfather anybody that. Had this in place when the whenever that change was made, I don't know how long that was. If that was the case, then you would have a date saying anybody who had this before this date, it's allowed. Anybody has it from this date after, it's not allowed. And if you want it, you know, again, if the city wanted to use enforcement, you would send all the people that had. Rock in the boulevard and you would say, you know. Unless you can demonstrate that your. Grandfather, do you have to remove it, right? And then then you have to figure out how many people are we talking about, what? Kind of information, so that would be one, that's one way you could you could get there. The other way is you could say from this period, from this point forward, we. If anybody who's got rock in the boulevard, you'd be that, you need to come and get a permit for it. If you get a permit for it. Then you'll be grandfathered and will have record of who those folks are and what a starting point. Anybody in the future moving forward, if you if you're not, you haven't got the permit by X date or whatever, then. You're not gonna be grandfathered, you know, that'd be. You've got to remove it and then now we have a clear enforcement line.
And record.
And as the people that already have the rock, then you use what you had suggested, which is you have the rock. Your grandfather again, but we have an ordinance that requires you to keep it out of the street. And now to the extent that you're using enforcement to get to your goal, you have a small pool. Of homeowners that you're you're trying to manage and then at least you have a clean. Clean spot on a moving forward basis. I mean, that can be, like, this approach, I think, could be used. On several of these things that we're dealing with, where we create a record of the people and then now we know. Moving forward, how to get to to some kind of uniformity, um. So I mean, again, I think legally we'd get you there if you tell us what you want.
I I like that approach. Uh, that councilman should make her enter, keep it completely out of um. Easement. And uh, everybody who has it. Come into the office, have it recorded, moving. Into, is that? What I'm hearing would be the option, and then the responsibility for anything would be that. I think that's that's uh, acceptable.
Not against that, as long as you can just make sure that all the owners are clearly aware that they need to get this permit. To maintain.
And the permit really is to just also for the city to have records that we know who is acceptable and we're not doing the whole back and forth. You know, who has it, who doesn't? Although there's some public works.
That's basically been my biggest concern with the grandfathering of a lot of this stuff, it's. I mean, Director Hoot right now, he could probably have a pretty good idea of where there is currently rock, where there's. Ten years down the road. He might have way more things going on, he's not gonna remember if one did this property have rock. Uh.
It's totally.
It's it's a lot faster than that.
It's like a brand new story.
Twenty thirty years down the road, we have different employees and public works, they're never. So so. I, yeah, my biggest concern was just having some kind of record. Uh, and not just guessing on, and they maybe had rock before.
Um. With the permit, um, I would just wanna say that. Boys might wanna make it clear if you're gonna make them pay for that or not, because if you put it. Uh, just a permit, they're gonna be like, are you gonna make me pay for that? So I would clarify that you're gonna do it for free, but.
Permit isn't a paper.
A word, then maybe we can find a different.
Registration.
And then, you know, that's what, again, I I I probably have the ordinance might say. Um, you know, all property within um, the jurisdiction of the city. Um. As of such and such a date that have has registered with the city is grandfathered, you know, grandfathered in. And then you you could time them at like registered by such and such a date and. And, yeah, and it would just be they'd come and fill out a registration form describing the property and whatever the. Whatever we're talking about, rock or amber pads or whatever, whatever it is that he wanted grandfathered in. And then we would have record of that. I think, I mean, I think we could create an ordinance. That would could accomplish that and then you would have some registration. And I'm not envisioning that you have to pay for it or anything else. It would just be, we wanna. We want a clear record of what property. Is grandfathered in and what property is not grandfathered in. Um.
So we have to go back to them, yes.
Yeah, because the only other way to to deal with grandfathering is you would cite somebody and you would say. You're in violation of our ordinance unless you can prove that you predate the change and and I don't. I don't like that dynamic. That doesn't seem like what you guys wanna accomplish, so.
That kind of comes across as guilty.
Right, again, I'm not suggesting that, but that, like, that's the only other way we could establish it is on a case by case basis, but this would be more like a. Amnesty. So that we have a starting point moving forward.
I was also gonna say, um, we can have them come in for the. Yes, thank you, the registration, but we can also go out with our GIS and we can take a picture. Of the front of the house with the rock. Um, and like, put it. Attach it to their house. So that we will have it on record in our GIS system. Of who has the rock and everything like that, also and a picture of it, so that we we can see exactly what they'll have. And where it's all. Yes, they'd be time stamped, dated.
Perfect.
So.
Then we have great record too for future tenures.
Then you wouldn't even have to do the thing, you could just overdo all the yards that have it. You know what I'm saying? You wouldn't even have to come in and have them registered, as long as you uphold your ordinance from here on out or whatever and you're good.
So Brandon would bring you it on, I guess.
Right?
Yeah, a lot of features, so.
And and I think to 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 accomplish the the goal of protect against, you know. Potential rock throwing, I guess, is that we would wanna look at, you know, for those folks that are. Going to be allowed to have it, we would wanna make sure that they understand that with that comes the responsibility that. You could be cited if your rocket's in the boulevard, right, and and make them responsible for damage. Um. Again, it's not, it's not a perfect solution, but it doesn't leave you without a remedy in the event that somebody's irresponsible and it caused, does cause some damage.
I like that.
Sounds so, council is that. What are you thinking, Councilwoman Arthalia?
I like what I'm hearing and I'm in agreement with it.
All right, so I think that's our first direction there.
And your best, uh, with um. With the yard standards. Um, I did not add. Something to mind, which I would like to. Um, I would like to allow. Uh, fence be allowed in the front yard. Uh, but with a height limit. Um, I was driving around Bismarck, dropping kiddos off. And there's actually quite a few yards in Bismarck that have chain link, solid fence, straight up to the curb.
Before getting that though, I think that probably would under the fence standards section.
I just wanted to add that in, so I wanna not forget.
Okay, so are we done then with the landscape work standards? I don't have anything else to change with this.
So. I guess for a rock and stuff like that within the yard, then are we getting rid of the requirements of like two inches in size and something after?
I think the cons. I think the concern was the easement forward.
Okay, so we would essentially be allowing a rock. Beyond these.
Like in front of the easement.
Outside of these.
Right, right. I guess that's, that's, I would say.
I guess I don't see a reason for this to be straightforward.
No, right, if they wanna put a boulder somewhere in their front yard, well, there's tons of boulders in Bismarck and actually. Not to go off topic, but um. There was a house in my neighborhood when I was growing up and somebody ran through their whole yard and fence. So they put boulders up to stop that, never happen again.
I think that's the bigger concern to what the.
Not the most. And we're gonna allow rock, people are gonna, you know, get wrong.
Under my section, I have some updates. Um. You can strike the artificial turf sentence. And. I would like to add.
He said strike number four under his hand sign.
Yeah, I, I think we all.
Then I wanted to add, uh, trees, shrubs and vines may not adversely affect adjacent properties.
Shall not of.
Adversely affect adjacent properties.
Okay, number five, you mean?
I knew that, where are you to shut my number one?
Or would you be adding number one?
Adding the line, it is in relation to. To to number five, yes.
Okay, so that would be for the.
Yes. And also on uh, number seven. I I'm okay with. I I'm okay with parking that being constructive landscape rock.
So shall be, so okay, so take out not incentive?
Yes, please. And then number six.
I would probably word may would be better there, the shall, so if you're gonna change it, parking that's may be constructive.
Perfect, did you catch that, Anne?
Yes.
Number six, then?
Yes, number six, um. Where it says not alter or construct natural drainage. Or existing stormwater management plans.
I agree with um. Orlando's with the parking pad, I see that I have on there. The same, I would strike to where the same goes, well, with show me. Anything else there? Now we go on to the fences. Um, for for the yards, I again, I. We decided, right, to keep fencing out of this. And uh, these two. The only edits that I have seen from councilman Boonstead. And. In in here. And I'll just reference mine because it's something here right now about. If we do change from that six feet to eight feet, it's gonna require changing my. And so we're aware of that, but then um. In the research, it has been noted that fences taller than six foot are more susceptible to the wind damage. And with neighborhoods in system with those. Uh, six foot fences, the vision. Visually standard reducing neighborhood complains about blocking shoes. So as what we had talked about this previously, firstly, let's go to the wind. The bigger the sail. You with with wind that we do have here. You're gonna have more damages. Possibly with that eight foot fence versus the six foot. Uh, and then most standard fences are those six feet, so we're gonna have a six and eight. That's. I'm not caring whatsoever, but those are visually. What he was talking about and then um. One of the gigs that we've been talking about previously is keeping it at that six foot. But then allowing for that deferment to be. Foot, when you want to, you would adjust that as well, keeping that six foot, keeping that the eight foot. Um, those is. In councilman York senses was just switching it from that six to the eight foot. Um, the other. Section or and then in. One B, both of us put in attached garages as far as they'll not extend beyond the front of the house for attached garage. Nor in the easements or right of way. Because that's one thing with the fence, if you bring the fence up to the yard, you're not gonna be able to. So just. But again, both of us um, put in there the attached garage and under C. It was in a that site triangle of ten foot. In ordinance that we currently have, it's twenty five, so it's a change for those situations. Now, just kinda going over the the height and placement. Uh, with that six to eight, I hadn't made a change to the six foot, you put it at eight. I just had made reference to the fact that with the wind that we have out here, that this makes a. A possible issue with fences following a little bit more that's. Property owner will they wanna pay for it. Uh, I it wasn't the same seat that I could pursue, sorry, it was just providing why. Uh, typically people will pass six foot versus the eight.
I mean, the the six foot is definitely the standard, I would say. My thoughts on having an eight foot would be if there are any very particular situations that it might call for. Or that a resident might want to, um. I don't know if there'd be, would we wanna or would it get too money if we'd have it that? Uh, having it at six foot, but then say. That an exception can be made with proper permitting from the city or something, the city would allow it in certain situations, but. That could be a can of worms as well.
Yeah, I think if we just stated at eight is the highest you can go to, then I majority pick six anyway, but. I don't think. Alright.
I was just gonna say I. If you had suggested six with some kind of permitting, then you're gonna have to have standards that are uniform or that. That tells you what when you're going to allow between the six and eight. And I mean, I've. I'm sure we can come up with what those are, but. It'd probably be easier for the city to administer if you just pick a maximum, I not create exceptions.
Eight being the max and.
I think I'd probably prefer to stay there then, yeah, that at the eight feet.
Shoemaker, if councilwoman and I probably got any more thoughts?
I think. The less that we have to impede on people's personal property rights, the better because. So it is a lot of overreach sometimes it feels like. So any, uh, the most amount that we can give to. Let them keep their decision making process for their own property better whenever we can, in my opinion.
I agree.
Alright, and so we'll change that to eight feet. Perfect, I B and C, we were. Along on. Under to the construction and maintenance. Okay, uh, for the height of placement, right, is that what we're on? Yes, for B, oh, yes.
Sorry, uh, for, you know, section one B. I did have remove on my easements. Uh, my thought on that is because. Uh, a lot of our properties have easements along the backyard. And those easements come in. By ten feet or more.
But this is referencing the front of the house. The front of the house attached garage according to the easement, so that. But his point is some of the easements are in the back.
I don't know if the way this is phrased, if it gets specific to the front, if. If that is all we're talking about is easements in the front, I guess I don't have an objection to that. Um, but I would just wanna make sure that.
We classify easements in front?
Yeah. I would maybe wanna make sure that that's.
Just make close up the sentence, saying since this cannot be constructed in easements.
Well, then.
But I would be in favor of them actually getting allowed in easements in the back. Because most of our properties already have easements along the back that come in to the yards. And most people wanna put their fence as close as possible. To utilize the full yard.
That could cause issues with drainage and utilities and stuff, though, if you allow them in the easements.
Believe we do. Have it set up, so.
Yeah, you can't be, there's standards on it.
Maybe that was part of the wrong one, but could be included here that it cannot interfere with.
Or electrical box, yeah. Well, we already have to monitor around electrical boxes cuz it's in an ordinance, right, cuz we had that issue already, when somebody put up a fence or a little fence by the electrical box. You can't have that because there's so many needs to get in there, and to take that on anybody to get in it. So Public Works does that, uh, and has done that, we, well.
How there was a person that should have been to put it move. Fence because of easement.
And you're not, um. I'm not sure how other cities do it, whether or not if you'd be to. Um, apply for a building permit or permit from the city. Um, as part of putting fence in place, which would then include some kind of site plan, so that. These types of issues can be. Well, a couple of things, first of all, if if there's permanent process. Then you're gonna have record of when things are constructed, so that down the road, if there are grandfather issues, you have some record when. Um. And then also. You can determine whether or not the fence is going in a place where it should should or should not go before they put the fence in place. Uh, but I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure with other available defense, uh, so I'm not sure if cities require offense, maybe you know.
Yeah, you have that process of the engineer for sure.
Yeah, Monty, you're right, that we do have a fence permitting process. In that process, that is exactly what we do, is we take into account. Um, that specific location and take a look at. Um, what easements are there, the type of easement, um. You're also correct, um, councilmember Boonstead that, um. A lot of fences run along the property lines where most of our utility easements are, um. That doesn't always cause a problem. The same as it would if a fence is blocking drainage in a drainage easement, um. And then we can also look at different types of, um. The right of way, for instance, and how the fence is impacting that, especially on lots that maybe are on a corner. So again, we go through that fence permitting process and we can take a look at. All those items on on a case by case basis. So I think that's already being looked at. So.
The other advantage of of that is that. It eliminates, uh, i- if if you have a robust. Accurate process for permitting for these appointments. Not only do you have a clear record of when they're put in, but it eliminates kind of what we had heard when some of the. Members of the city have come in with concerns, which is, you know, they. Their neighbor did it, so they did it, right, I mean, it's like he gives the city on a firm foundation that. You need to get, you need to to do the application, you get the permit and then. Then at least then if the city makes a mistake, got record of who's who said what, who gave the approval and. I think it might eliminate some of those issues on a one basis.
And so to clarify, when somebody wants to put up a fence. We come to the city office. They should permit. And you as the city engineer. Look at. The uh, plan or the.
Like a sketch.
Sketch and approve or disapprove or give recommendations.
I believe that's a process, nobody has submitted one since I've been in this position. But um, we definitely have a fence permit, we have a process in place, so, um. That being said, um, for instance, construction with concrete. That's something that typically falls to Director Shute. Um, but I got to do one of those this week because he was not in. Um, so there's coverage that way, I think staff in the office knows that if. Maybe it's something that Director Shute is doing and he's not available, they can pass it on to myself.
I may be ignorant on this, but do we have it in our ordinance that a permit is required for offense?
I'm pretty sure we do, yes. Cause I had to get them. And we want, if if this is the route.
And that could be something else that we need to take a look at too, is as this is getting updated, we wanna make sure that. There's um. Correct information in that permit.
One of the, and and that would be great, uh. Because it was like a year ago. Or points is so just.
And and uh, Greg Fazer and I had had some discussions about. Along these lines of, um. Figuring out when members of the public want to. Touch a a utility in the in the cities right away. Like what does that process look like? If they wanna tap into something, what does that process look like and and kind of streamline and making sure that we have. Again, a a robust kind of permitting process so that there's some uniformity. And I can't remember exactly what it was, but I think what what spurred that conversation was, I mean, Carrie, you remember was that. Somebody had tapped into a water line or a water drain or something without pulling the permit first and. Um, you know, we don't, we don't want that to happen, so yeah, I think that's part of this is. Roll this out, we're would wanna look at how the city handles. These kind of applications permitting so that we have. Some uniformity and that everything's in place and we we had done some of that research already. On my office house, just haven't. Incorporated and called yet, so.
So would you want to? Remove that part about the easements then in this section since it would probably be. Contingent on like approval.
Covered already.
Like it it's gonna be on a more case by case situation.
I I I think you're, I mean, I I I think the source of of whether or not you're entitled. Needs to be in your ordinance. Right, so the ordinance, because because. If somebody comes in and they say, I'm gonna put a fence here and the here or the city staff says, no, you can't. Now, okay, well, what's the basis of that? It can't just be because. The engineer, the lawyer, the city staff don't think it's a good idea, and that's not a standard that we can force in any way, so. I think you do have to figure out. Where you're going to allow these things and where you're not, and the permitting process is more. Um, in situations where, like to be able to enforce that in some consistent way. Put the landlord in a position of having like, well, can I put a fence in? And where's the easement? I don't know where the easement is, has it been affected drainage? I don't, you know, that we, I don't know the landlord to sort those things out. But we, I think, do we put the standards in of some kind in your ordinances?
And then I, I don't know why we wouldn't want it. To keep easement in there. Because we're requiring either rocks to be left of the easement.
Well, I'm not a hundred percent certain what what you're, what the the purpose of the word easement is, right, because you're gonna, you're going to have. You. Better than I do, right, but you're gonna have, you're gonna have public, public right of ways, right, so that when we plan, we're creating. Utility right of ways and easements, right, where.
Typically, the right of way would be. Um, along the same lines of your roadways. Um, your roadways are usually narrower and within that, and a lot of times we try to get you utilities to run within that right of way. But for other areas where you need to run utilities or you want stormwater to move. Along, say, property lines, so like your side yard, your rear yard, that's where we a lot of times will see easements. So there are two separate entities, so we have to watch how we put. The language in there. So there's different types of easements, uh. So there's different types of easements, and if you just use the word easements, it's really general. And so, yeah, it's kind of a job and umbrella. Having to follow along with what Attorney Roddaby said, Roddaby said was. The more detail you can put in there does really help staff, including myself, to. Explain to those that are applying, this is why. We're approving or not approving based on the information that's included in the ordinance and in the city code. So the more detail that you want to add with how you want to do things is helpful for us in that process.
We just. At the table say, we want, we look like. Or we think that would be important things are A, B, and C. And then leave it to the attorney to the brokerage and the engineer for. The specifics on how then we set up.
Yeah, and I can take it and look at it against the permit that's in place now, and we can make sure that everything is working together. Harmoniously.
Because certainly you can have a situation where. You have a private easement. Right between. He's. The first house I had in Bismarck, my neighbor's house. Was two feet on my property. And my predecessor in interest had granted them an easement that helps to remain on that two feet of my property. That's a private easement, that that's, I don't think that's it, maybe that's not something that we're going to be concerned about. As far as where the fences go and things, that might be different than. A public utility easement, right, or a public easement. So it's something we're going to have to look at, I think. I don't, I don't have a. Clear answer in my mind how to address that, but I do think that she's right, that we want to have some specificity so that we have a standard that can be enforced.
Would it be something that we could say? That it cannot be any drainage, specifying that for its type.
I I would probably, I'm sorry, but I I would probably say it can't impede. A drainage easement, or it can't impede the the utility easement or whatever, and then then that becomes a standard. You know, there might be a standard there, but I I would want to look at, you know, the nice thing about a lot of this is that we're not the first one. Cities addressing these things, so there's probably some. Uniform language that we can look at, but. I don't know that I want to make it black and white that you can't be an easement or you can't be in a drainage easement, I'll probably say as long as. Whatever you're proposing is not impeding the drainage, right? And then that becomes an engineering function then.
Because each each area is going to be set up. Right, we can, we can even have some easements, just like say Bismarck, right, that have rock in there to even help with the drainage because of runoff. Just like at my parents' neighbor, they be hollow. They have been flooded three times and they live on top of a hill, so most of the yards that have easements have rocks in them to slow the water down, but. So I mean, it all varies, like there's tons of different ways and things that you can do easements and not do.
Well, you can leave it to the professionals to go out and say. Will impact.
Yeah, there's different impacts, different uses. Each one will be. On a different basis when we're looking at those permits, so.
Our current ordinance is five dash zero four dash zero one. Should we just modify that where we want to be instead of creating a new one? And have you look at two different places for the same. Some bonus.
The rest now, but this is so somebody, a resident is right up in my yard, there's one place because right now. We have chapter five, eight, nine, and thirteen. That are addressed right in here and and so. You know, chapter five, maybe one thing, chapter nine. And which one are you going to follow this? This isn't necessarily chaining the whole lot, it's just.
Okay, just on.
And right to add it all in.
And so is that something we want to then? Leave the past is, but. With the. Engineer. The attorney looking at what was and stand standards are easements, having that all under the. Type of these, I think, views.
And collaborate with the engineering permit. In there.
What do you not it? That it cannot impede.
Impede, I couldn't think of what the word was, impede.
Yeah, I think so. We'll find our way to permit it as he works itself. We'll.
All right, yeah, one of the things that councilman embarrassed to add was referencing. How some residents might want to utilize those temporary snow fences. So. I looked at that, I thought that was a great idea, if we added. Another. Letter, you know, just under the construction and maintenance. Adding the number or a letter D, temporary snow fences intended for seasonal use and permitted, starting. That November one to March thirty first, and those days were put in the specific possession of which forty eight over the version. And then adding in that barbed wire fence. In or along the residential areas, particularly, I don't know that anybody has it. But it uses a different assumption, so I bet that. So that would allow.
I'd say I would maybe remove that barbed wire fence, electric fence. I heard, I had heard of some horror stories of people. Yeah. Put an electric fence in the residential. In her case, stuff, I mean.
What do you think about that, just instead of having? Instead of removing those temporary fences, just for. Temporary snow fence. Is that specifically considered, please? I know I personally had it put up one. When my fence blew down. In one of our storms. Keep the doors and everything some faces.
I'm just trying to. I'm just trying to think of how much. People might try to argue the temporary fence kind of thing. If somebody sets up a little temporary play area in their front yard for toddlers or dogs or something. That could be something that's technically going to be going against our organs. Any place that I'm a little.
I think that would just be in their yard though, not on the. Fence line, you know what I mean?
Right, this is all inclusive inward yard. How fences can we use?
Yeah, but that, like, the way that you're explaining it, right, they're not utilizing it. Specifically as a fence, it's mainly as like a player. Right?
Even that a temporary fence? I guess I.
No.
I feel like that's just a different way of saying it, saying it. It's something.
Visualizing.
In.
Like a thing, yeah.
What does it say here or the definition? Is structure constructed to enclose or defined in air?
A bit, I mean, we we have tons of daycares, right, that have little plastic fences. Right, keeping toys and kids in areas in the yards.
And and.
So is that not allowed?
Well, I think it should be allowed, but I'm wondering if the way this is worded, saying that. Temporary fences are prohibited. Does that technically say that they're going to be going against the organs if they have?
I think it would only be if it's utilized on your property line or fence, yes, that, you know what I mean? Because whatever you do inside, I mean, that's. You've got no control of that. I think I don't know. I mean, unless you're going to put a fourth like nice little, yeah, I I guess I'm not understanding, I do.
Well, so like you have your front yard. Say you have a couple of toddlers, you're going to spend some time on your front yard. But you don't want to have to make sure that they're sitting right beside you, so you set up. A little play area with some. Fencing type material. So they can play in this area. That would, in my mind, that's technically a temporary fence.
No.
I think if it's left in the yard for a period of time to become a temporary fence, that it would follow as a debris category of not be allowed to have just. Debris in your yard.
I I don't know that there'd be a whole lot of people.
Daycare is the best, pallets and tarp's with the kids.
Well, no, I'm not referring to like pallets and tarp's, I'm just, I'm tying ball like, you know, you can go to. A lot of just stores in town, Menards, Walmart, wherever you can buy. Little plastic fencing things.
I I wouldn't consider that a temporary event, I would not say it's a play.
Is it possible that somebody might argue that though? They're mad at their neighbor or something, be like, hey. They're technically violating this ordinance because they have a temporary fence set up, but they did support it.
Okay, so devil back kit, right? When a new building goes up, right, they put up those still fences. Right? Sometimes those even stay on long periods of time, like no building can be put up. Right? So are you considering that as a temporary? Fence too?
Technically, it's right in the name, that's a sold fence.
But but.
That's what I'm saying, I'm wondering if having temporary fences in here might be two bags.
I I. Attorney brought it to me, you that.
Well, I was just going to say that, I mean, I I think that. You you, it's like I think maybe you said at the last meeting, discovering why it's difficult to write legislation, right? Because of what you're referencing. If we want, we want to. If your goal should be to address. Kind of problems that you see. And to some extent, if. If somebody has a a plastic. Child toddler fence up and their neighbor says that's a. Temporary fence that needs to come down and it comes into the, like, if it came to the issue city attorney, I would be like. Whether that's a violation of the code or not, I'm exercising my discretion not to get involved in that, right? Because I I don't have to just because somebody feels it's an issue. And then if it continues to be a problem, I'd say I'd bring it to the council and amend the. The. Orders, but I do think that there are going to be some, as you do this, there's going to be some gaps where it's not quite clear. I think I would focus on things that are a known problem now and address those, and I think you're to be uncomfortable of all these little traps and things, but. The good news is that the barrier to change. Here is really small, I mean, literally, we can change your code in a month if there's a problem with something, so. Yeah, but I understand what you're saying, it's it's the inherent difficulty of, it's why lawyers make a living, this stuff is never as clear. You said someone's going to argue, I'm like, yes, somebody is going to argue that. Somebody will at some point.
So I think if we leave it, right, and if it comes down there, then we cross that bridge when we get to it?
But do we want to put in some that's temporary snow fence as a subject?
I feel like that, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So then the next section, unless somebody does something else to add, would be that utility access. I've, the difference in that was either the thirty six and forty eight. And. What I had looked at. The standard residential pedestrian gauge of those thirty six inches. But would be not that utility access, we have to about big enough. For it. Or for those utility people to go again. So when Capital Electric was here. Last year, we were going over. That agreement with them, one of the things that they were talking about was the utilities and. It having access to that, I don't know if switching it from that forty eight. Down to thirty six is going to accomplish that, because if. If you are looking at the gate to. And as a walkthrough gate, maybe. Thirty six fine, but if it's specific to utility, I don't know how much utility work is going to be about fitting within that thirty six. And. I know when we put up our fence, I contacted Capital Electric. And they had said something about a twelve foot. And so because they'd have to be able to, that's close surrounds. That utility. And. You can't have it locked, you have to have access. And because if they have to get back with it. It's locked, where it's not a big area for them to get through, they're going to have to go through it anyway, so. We put in those two six foot panels. Not saying that else has to do that, but I think that that was. Specific to that. Forty eight and thirty six, that's the version of it. So I'll just, I.
Mayor Council, I I have no qualms, so just putting that forty eight. And if you want to go forty eight, do it, if not. And and again, be aware too, right, and and I think they're even told that. Loretta, correct me if I'm wrong, I could have swore to that engineers, right, make it known. That if you put this fence up and if it's not accessible to. The utilities, they have the right to take away or to access that, any means necessary. Am I wrong on that one? That engineer does state that when we.
Typically, that's how that works, is that if you put a fence up. In an easement. That blocks their access, then they would be able to access however they need to.
Right, because, yeah, they. Told me that too when. I was doing mine, so there's that also piece of information too, that they get warned. And have a fair warning if they do the proper steps anyway and go through the city, right? To build a fence, they they do get that information and are aware, so. By us, I think putting forty eight two just covers the city as well, but they've. The citizen, right, if, again, if you go through proper chain. Get that information saying, hey, if you don't have access around this box, if your panels can't come up. They're going to do whatever they need to to get into that box.
I guess I kind of look at it as. Like you said, if they're going through the proper procedure to do this, they're being informed that. The utility companies. Are required access to this if they can't get to it by just walking through a gate. Oss has to be removed or whatever it might be, they they have that discretion that they need to. So I think you'd be fine to put it as thirty six being a fairly standard size condition eight. With them knowing that if that isn't going to be enough for them to go through. Then they're going to make their way through it. So it's up to the homeowner if they want to go to it or turn it off.
Right, so so that was my reason for forty eight, right? If somebody wants to have a little extra or bigger access.
Well, this is saying that it has to be least. So this is going to be the the minimum sentence, so. If we say that thirty six, it has to be a minimum thirty six, and they can always go larger.
I got you, I got you.
Rather than going up to forty eight and reducing. Twelve inches of size, they may potentially want to be.
But this is also specific to utility access, it's not. Residential. Pedestrian gate, this is specific to that utility. So if it's accessing utility, unless I'm reading wrong.
Well, if that utility box is in her backyard. They would be accessing it through the street.
Well, that's, well, some people put a gate though back there too, just because of. If MDU or Capital Electric need to get in, they got a gate right there, so they don't got to bother them. You know what I mean? And then they don't have any qualms, there's an open gate and accessible, not need to be there. A lot of people do, I'm saying everybody does, like, you know, just like with wooden fences, right, that are around, so then don't. Have gates on that side, but. A lot of people do have side gates. Or easy access.
Yes, I'm I know of at least a few yards around town that. The utility box is just within the person's backyard, and so they will have one gate going into the backyard. So this would be referencing that one.
Okay, I have two. Just, but I have, but I know we have the pedestrian one on this side, which is forty eight and. The one that follows that to. The utility. I guess even in that situation, we're seeing that it could be different.
Forty eight just allows, right, if a car has to be out there, if 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 they need extra room, that's that's.
I think your car is going to affect you with forty eight inch.
Well, I'm just. You know? So what do you depend, like a a bobcat, right, a a vehicle? They use them, they anger, they.
Is one foot gonna make a difference for um the homeowner having to remove the fence in case of you know upstairs here or. Different chest of the back there.
It definitely could, depending on where that.
Forty-eight inches is four feet, that's gonna be approximately this wide. I don't think anything that. Can't fit within a thirty-six inch gate is gonna magically fit within a forty.
I would weigh that against what they spent their hardship zipping on a homeowner who puts forty-eight percent thirty-six and.
I know the larger gates are typically a bit more expensive, like gates are kind of expensive.
I think he he gets no better than me on this. The amount given is necessary, so I'll defer to people with more experience.
Doesn't matter, is there any thing? Red mismanagement, the as far as a standard that you see with residential. Utility access that thirty-six is just forty. I don't think so. I think it's just allowing the access um. And being informed of that, you can make your own decision. Um a lot of people have a gate or a double gate so that you can get some kind of vehicle. Um in the rear yard, more so for their own access, not necessarily for utilities, but. Just having that information shared, I think. Um is what's important, getting that communication out to whoever's putting the fence.
So then attorney, uh if if we took out the athletes language. Would it? Better served just to say gate access. To allow for those utility access, understanding if it is not. Wide enough.
I mean, how 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 would you say that would be a good way, or is there something?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't, I mean, I, my recommendation is that you should figure out what the best practice is. And then you should build that into your code, right? And I don't know what the best practice is, so. I I I'd be interested to find out if the. If there's a model code that the. Municipal Association has, I'm just curious as to whether or not they have recommendations for cities on these issues. But I I think that you. What we talked about before, we wanna be as specific as possible to avoid. Because when you mean. We weigh as a discretion, then you're gonna end up with not uniformed over time that.
So is that something that maybe we could take a look at?
Definitely, we can take a look at that. I can give you some different examples, maybe of what other communities are using and. That can help you make a decision on what you wanna see.
Have you do have a community?
Yeah.
Or even just email between now and.
I think that it would be helpful to uh share the information as soon as I can. Put that together and then we can um share. If you'd like, we can share it at a meeting then following that. Okay, okay, thank you.
Google said, hey, I says three to four foot, that's why.
Yeah.
Which is thirty-six to forty-eight.
Oh, sound a lot, doesn't it?
Oh, great. So so what do you think about this um? I should to just take a look at those fence standards. All encompassing. And we can address it, send it to all of us, we'll take a look at it and be ready to discuss that.
I'm good with that, thank you. Well, um. Are are we done with this so far, like then?
Yes. Then we. She'll come. So then, uh parking pads and vehicle parking.
Yeah, per one, if I may, do we want to? Continue on with the these verification of rest finances or since we're already two hours in the meeting? Should we? Reviewing the rest of it at the next meeting and continue on since we've both talked for a moment, so.
I did see the individual walkout fence. Does he come back or are you going to?
You, I can remember.
Okay.
I'm I'm okay with the reviewing the rest of this package as soon as we. That way too, if um us as individuals can go through it too again, over the break and more little tweaks we have.
And and this might expedite things too, but I know that there was a lot of discussion that in order um. That for the parking pads and vehicle parking. In here, um. I was going to mention that uh you know, before moving. Forward with any code amendments for parking pads, vehicle parking, specifically parking on grass. I think it would be better served to have the entire community have input on this rather than just the five of us. As easy as what we did with chickens. Vote. At the next election, whether we want to. Because if the people, there are gonna be just so many people, maybe better for or against. That way we don't have to have a lot of debate here, let the people talk. And their voices be the ones that we use. And so parking on grass. Or pavement or however that is supposed to be.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
And open to that, but what takes place in the?
The same as usual. I would assume anyone, I know.
I found a previously mentioned that no parking on grass didn't actually. Permanent to residential area beyond or. The only residential areas that actually applies to is multifamily homes of a rear door.
So then we just leave it? I'll put it on the map. Uh Artavia, do you have anything to add to that one?
Alright, so can I just ask, have you guys any of you have looked at the North Dakota um century codes? For parking? Uh not recently. I was just thinking you guys do, um I did run across a couple of things under that. Um about um all weather surfaces, um drainage, I did read some of that on there.
Yep, and uh. You know, parking on grass dirt, impervious services is prohibited, which is consistent with regional practices. Bismarck and West Fargo are good municipal examples. That's why it's construction of asphalt creek. Concrete approved, so yes, it's. Um I I haven't found. I gotta look at every municipality, but uh. Because of. The compacting. The dirt. Those impervious. Um surfaces. Is the key there, so any parking on the graphic. But. You know, if if we're going to say let's park on grass. Again, even to. Yeah, even though. You know, other municipalities. Have that distance, so.
But that's how laws work, right? I, you know, if um. If it's on a ballot, right, and they choose for it to be something different, then the ordinance changes to that and accommodate that.
So it's just working on the verbiage because according. You know, and maybe finding if there is anything turning right be specific to, I haven't seen anything specifically. They can camp, park on the grass, the repercussions of, or some of the situations that could arise. Are issues. But.
So I don't know that that, as the city attorney being asked to issue kind of. Formal opinion on that. I know that when this issue first came up a few months ago, um. Gavin did did a memo to me on this issue of. Parking on grass and whether it's already prohibited by a code and. Certainly, there is some support that off-street parking under the code. Um requires an all-weather surface. You know, s- seem like it would prohibit parking on grass, but I mean, I looked at what he sent me and I. It 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 might not be quite as clear whether or not it's, whether or not parking on grass is currently prohibited, but I don't see any real issues. Council has a lot of discretion to. Point. Enforcement at the things that are most important to the council, and while you're looking at this, I don't have any problem. With the idea that, you know, trying to get to a uniform standard to figure out what's fast and in the meantime, um unless there's some. Major reason why we would go looking for enforcement action against somebody that will just kind of leave, see how this plays out.
Alright, good, so. Now, if you wanna think any not. Barring any. Legal reasons. So. And and I don't know, we'll have to take some more vote into because if it is something that affects groundwater or. Stormwater issues to where federal funding or permits, you know, those are hard to give back.
But we, yeah, and we have to take a look too on where where we're at right now, right? If we're already doing it right now, are we having issues? What issues arise because of? And we did have that assault, so I don't.
But but it'll be good, we'll take a finger look at that, um and if. Next week or in that first meeting in December, if we want to uh. Look at just no parking on the grass, we don't need to put it on the.
Right.
The on the ballot. But if the consensus is we want to park on grass, we're gonna put it on the ballot, so I think that's it. Save that decision. And Councilwoman Artavia?
Yeah, I'm sure I'm in agreement. If I have anything to add, I promise all people.
Alright, perfect. Uh let's go on him and we'll come back to it next. Next meeting, uh number twelve, the public hearing for the final plat of Ridge Third Edition, and a motion. To move into public hearing, make a motion to move into public hearing. Uh first by Councilwoman Davis, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Council issue neighbor. Vegas A.
Aye.
Post. So moved. And if if there's uh. A review of that final plat or do you propose someone?
And mayor, council members, I have staff report. For the final plat of Ridge Third Edition. I can give you the watered-down version here, a brief, um. This location of Ridge Third Edition is west of Eightieth Street, south of the Bridge Edition and north of Lincoln Road. Proposing to develop a forty-two lot rural residential plant, which would provide housing opportunities within the community. Be changing from agricultural to R R two rural residential. Which allows for single-family dwellings, utility service group and public recreation group. In addition. There is. A number of findings of fact regarding stormwater management. Um a full stormwater management plan has been completed and recruit and approved. Um park and open spaces ha- does. Have to follow city ordinance nine. Eight, five, section five, and that does apply, that has already been addressed with the Park District. And beyond that, the property is currently annexed into the City of Lincoln. Step recommends with based on the above findings, approval contingent on receiving a current title commitment. And updating the engineering block in the plat. Um another item would be contingent on an agreement with the City of Lincoln, Burley County and Apple Creek Township. For Twenty-Second Avenue and Eightieth Street, and that is something that I had found in the documentation regarding the plat. Um but I couldn't find all the information towards that, so if that's something that's been worked out, um. That the applicant can just pass that along and will be able to clear that contingency. Any questions regarding the proposed plat in front of you?
Just repeat that last part that you said, where is that the issue at, please?
Uh Commissioner Artavia or Councilwoman Artavia, do you mean um? The last piece about an agreement with City of Lincoln, Burley County and Apple Creek Township for Twenty-Second Avenue and Eightieth Street?
Yes, please.
So I found some rec uh reference to that in the documentation for this um that we received. And I couldn't find a lot of information to explain to me to have a clear understanding of what that agreement is referencing. So I just wanted to make note of it in the contingencies here. That if that agreement is something that still needs to happen, we wanna make sure that it does. If it's already been taken care of or is no longer needed, if that information could get passed along, we'd be able to clear that out of this contingency. Um but barring any of that, I do recommend approval of the plat.
And I believe Mr. Lowery will be to move you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
So. You mean mayor and council, John Lowery, Lowery Engineering, representing the contingent owners um for this subdivision um. You know, we've worked on this project to uh master planning and working through this for some time. This is the continuation and the plating of the remainder of the rural residential lots on the eastern side of the property. And uh you know, and and the rezone, I would note uh from the agricultural to the R two, so um. It's intended to be built out in phases, uh that that's been discussed and addressed previously uh with a future phase kind of. Uh you know, coming for the southern third, I guess, of of what's been plotted on that east side, um. Eightieth Street has been adopted. I would note that I believe the package that you have there is an updated plat. It's mainly addressed as screws right now in the plat, this road that curves into Eightieth. And uh there's been some coordination with county and different units that that does need to be called Eightieth Street, so the current plaque that would be filed. Would have that as Eightieth, and that has been adopted by the county for ownership and maintenance of that long term. So I think that's what was being referenced to in the agreement, and the county's gone through that, and you know, they've taken ownership of that, made some improvements. Widening Eightieth Street towards Lincoln Road, the existing portion here recently, but um.
So Burley County is gonna take over that one and then they.
And they and they have, yeah, 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 for both of us, yeah, so um.
Uh, sorry. Not to put you off, so for. Twenty second. The whole thing, right? The whole thing, the whole straightest.
I I don't know about twenty second. I don't know if that's been addressed, but. Mayor Burglin, you might have more information on that.
About twenty second of the way up to the eight. Then it jumps over. And and bumbles through so up to that twenty second and I believe Director Shute that that is the agreement that that he was still. Working on twenty second, it's no removal.
If early county is taking it over, I.
And and that was the discussion that we had had with. Early county when we met at the GLT that talks about the. Because there was concern with Apple Creek, you know, where we moved to the road.
Right.
They did the other half of it, so really can't be said, but take it over. And that was the last I heard, so I just wanted to make sure that it's all covered.
So I know for sure Eightieth has been officially taken over. The county took action and they they are maintaining and. You know, and that the intention is in perpetuity. I don't know if that has been resolved on twenty second. I guess what I would ask is this third edition does not is not adjacent to twenty second. If we could maybe work through that and in the next phase, when we do go to plat stuff along twenty second, we just make sure that that's resolved before that. If that's reasonable. But yeah, and if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to. You know, there's a first edition, I think we called that spruce. And initially spruce did not tie into Eightieth, and so there's a correction, just so you're aware, it's nothing really to this. That's going to occur with the first edition plat as well that we're working through with, you know, so.
So does that mean it's going to connect to Eightieth Spruce?
It does know, yep, that that's that was.
Not just to twenty second, right? So.
S- s- spruce, the extension of. Eightieth. Does connect to, I'm sorry, the extension of spruce does curve into Eightieth. So spruce south of twenty second is now referred to as Eightieth. The issue that came up is when we plotted, we plotted it as spruce in the first edition prior to this, you know, next phase being adjusted.
Got you.
This initially cut off here. It did not curve in. And that was a request and something that was adjusted after the first edition was plotted.
Thank you so much. Any questions, Mr. Lowery?
I guess I would just state that my preference would be in agreement with the engineer. To have that addressed for twenty second street and resolved.
Yes.
Be able to know. Before we make that approval. That would be my personal training.
But that would be for the next phase.
Yeah, we we.
But I agree. That it would be. Most advantageous for us to get that resolved as soon as possible. I agree with what the engineer said.
Thank you. Martian is back to the podium.
I just want to make sure and clarify because I'm not sure that that came. Through so that Councilwoman Artavia is understanding my intent would be that. I recommend moving forward, understanding that we would still be working on these three items that I mentioned, which was. The engineer that's doing the plat would update the title block. They would update. This agreement and get that to us as that moves forward. However. See what I have for the third thing. Now that I've put my paperwork away.
Or title.
Title commitment, thank you very much. So as we work forward getting that cleaned up. I don't think that that prohibits you from moving forward and voting on approval of the plat this evening. Typically, you can attach these contingencies and they will work on getting those back to us. They're usually minor. And because we do have other items that we can hold them to as they move forward. I feel like it is. Easy request for them to address the agreement for twenty second when we are looking at. Between now and when we're looking at plating. I wrote. Let me get the right words here. When we look at moving forward with developing a property that's along twenty second. So I think as long as we have it in place by that time, we would be okay moving forward.
Oh, if if that some place in writing in. What you're what you're talking about and I would feel most comfortable with that.
Yeah, she has another staff recommendations.
In terms of the timing.
Got you. All right. Thank you.
We sure can amend. It's and I can submit something to the developer's engineer, letting them know that that is. Your preference, if that's how you would like it, so that they are understanding that they need to get us those items in the staff report. If that would be helpful. Or if you want to just go with how the staff report is in our discussion, that's okay as well.
I I think that. Council first because I I believe if we go ahead with the staff recommendations. Intergent on, we're already stating that's contingent on, so. Plan is, do you have anything else?
The contingency of the current title commitment is. So that says that the the base, the ownership of land isn't finalized yet. Which has nothing to do with annexing means property as.
It's already.
Sorry, approving this. With that, is there any issues that come up? If there's any change. With the property and how will that affect the. The agreement that was put in place with this problem?
I think what we have to remember as well is once you put your stamp of approval on this, this still has to be vetted with the county. So things get passed along to the county for them to put their stamp of approval on and. Things would get recorded until that title commitment's in place, so. If that's what you're questioning is making sure that those changes can't. Throw this thing off and move it forward.
Right, throw it off or be. Conflicted with any agreements that was previously already put in place because of the issues.
Right, so as this would move forward, but I'm getting that title commitment, that would be part of the requirements before it would ever get recorded. At the county level. Any other questions for me regarding this?
Any other questions? Okay, so then I would introduce a motion to. Do you have one more?
Yeah. So so the. One of the conditions, that condition about twenty second and Eightieth is. In agreement that we're not a part of, you know, it's between the city. And that great township and in the county and we're certainly willing to. You know, assist and promote and 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 help out however we can, but we can't certainly can't. You know, be involved or make any decisions on that. So I I'm not sure what exactly. The expectations are of us regarding that.
I don't think it's necessarily expectations for you, right? I think it's expectations for us as a city as a whole. So that we all have that information before we move forward.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, there's some history with that that I think, you know, I'm not sure if everybody is aware of, but I think those comments came into the file when Apple Creek. Was illegally trying to shut down people using their right way, you know, and I think that that has been resolved at this point in time. So I don't know that there's continuing concerns with it, but if there's any specific things or concerns that are out there, please. No, let's get them in the the condition, but it's it's not really on us, I guess is what I'm saying, so I'm gonna put it, you know, I I don't know how to.
It's still a contingency for the city before moving forward, which is why it's. Right, or for the prime weeds. I lost my other train of thought.
Okay, thank you.
So if we want to. Close. Our. I'll make a motion to close public hearing. We have a first by Councilwoman Davis is her second.
Oh, second.
Second by Councilman Harrison. They were saying I.
I.
Propose. And so moved. So what are the issues of council? I make a motion to approve on the contingency of the findings of our engineer. And then. Within a a timely frame as well, a timely frame, timely manner, and I can't give that. Hey, we have a first by Councilwoman Davis is her second.
Oh, second.
Second by Councilman Shoemaker on the favor say I.
I. I.
Oppose. So moved in the role call place. Harrison.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Artavia.
Yes.
And Shoemaker.
Yes.
And again, too, I just want to reiterate, I the number two, I more so just for the city because of last time. We were still not sure of what was going on at twenty second, so we just want to make sure how we're covering all our bases. I I hit touch base with. Yeah. Just get some very patient bring that there and the next page. All right, thank you, thank you. Thanks, you too, and happy Thanksgiving. All right, we'll go on to item number thirteen, Councilwoman City Staff. Councilman Harrison.
I asked for this to be put onto the agenda for this evening. After an email conversation I had with the mayor this last Friday, Saturday. Last week. Mayor Burglin has done email contacting the chief of police, myself and the auditor. With questions that she had with some ongoings within the police department. It made me think of when we went over this spring over the code of ethics and we discuss. The council's contact within the city staff. My understanding is that you had it set up, so. If there were any questions about something going on within a particular department that. The portfolio holder would be the first one to contact it. And then if any further. Contact needed to be within the department, then that portfolio holder would be the one reaching out to the department head. And if the department head would need to, they can reach out to the city employee. My understanding that this was a policy to. Be used by the whole council, including the mayor as part of the city council. And based on our email conversation, it seemed that Mayor Burglin disagreed and thought that the mayor. Did not need to follow this particular policy. I included the email conversation that the two of us had regarding this policy and. Mayor Burglin brought up. The century code regarding the mayor's executive responsibility. And I'm not disputing what the legality is of it. Legally, any of us can contact city staff at any time. But we set up these internal policies to make sure that. There's a clear chain of communication between the departments, making sure that there aren't any council members. Including the mayor, not necessarily saying that you were doing this at this time. Are reaching out to city staff. More than necessary or. That there's any kind of issues with like. Constant reaching out for small things. Basically. Based on our email conversation, I feel like we disagree on who all needs to follow this particular set of policy. And I wanted to reach out to the whole council to see how everybody felt on this.
So how you feel with the mayor contacting and emailing Chief Ginnings?
In this particular situation, I felt that it would have been more appropriate for the mayor to reach out to me first. And then if I couldn't answer any questions, then I would reach out to Chief Ginnings as the head of portfolio that I told. Rather than her reaching out directly.
Oh, I I mean, I don't know the context, right? Was it?
And if the mayor wants to bring up the particular. That's fine, but. I'm looking at this as.
Let me.
Kind of in any situation.
Well. So again, but in a like a. Mayor has right authority to contact anybody. Right? And in case of a situation. Mayor would have authority to go over any of our portfolios, right?
Yep.
And reach out and ask, so along those lines, I agree, right, with reaching out and. Coming to an agreement or figuring out the situation. Again, without context, I I can't. Really, and I don't want to get into it, right, because it's not. What we're here for. But for transparency purposes and for communication purposes with conduct. Mayor's got authority. Yes, they uphold, right, the same rules. That the city has put in place.
So are you saying that you feel the mayor does not need to follow these same policies?
So I. Again, a context, right? I does she need to follow rules? Absolutely. Does the mayor need to follow rules? Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that is clear. I am not. Specifically addressing you saying mayor, like I'm not saying that you did something wrong. I'm just saying like.
As a man, right?
And yeah, just the mayor position.
And I. As the mayor position. Should you have been CC'd into it?
She did.
So, okay, so well, then there's. All chain of commands followed.
Well, what I'm saying is that I feel that the mayor that to follow this policy, which I believe is. Meant to be enacted for the council as a whole, mayor being part of the council. That somebody would reach out to that portfolio holder first, not just CC them on an email that they're already contacting the department.
I don't see any fear violation just based on a little bit of information that you're speaking of right now. I don't see any third violation.
I see.
And I I don't, I mean. I just think that we need to. Be considerate of. The chain of command also that relates to our mayor, you know, I mean, I think we need to be cognizant of that. Both up and down the chain of command, both ways.
Also, then Shoemaker.
I think the the CC regarding contacting the department did create a gray area and followed specifically the. The the structure that was set up, but. But I'm keeping everybody informed altogether, I think is what's most important. I think the. The intent was good. You know, nothing negative meant by it, but.
And I agree, I don't think there's any malicious. Anything malicious about it. I just want to make sure that we're all. Aware and approve of the policies that we are all. And so if it's a situation where the mayor position doesn't necessarily have to follow. These particular policies that we've set up for council. We may potentially watch and put in there that there's an exclusion for the mayor, since the mayor is technically part of the city council as well.
You do you look at submitting requests for information and specifically says. That it would go to the appropriate department head, the city auditor or the mayor. It's so. It's so. That I would think would mean that I would have ability to ask questions. And this was, I was asking for clarification about um information that was not presented to council. That had specifically gone to the portfolio holders, but not relate to the rest of the council, so then council didn't know. What was going on, I asked, hey, what's. Full disclosure, because of the last meeting, you've got the three night vehicle and um. Uh, a promotion within the police department, we're all getting contact for it, we didn't know about it. And so I reached out for this, um, you know, uh, council isn't aware of this, we're hearing phone calls. What has changed? That, straight to the point, it wasn't anything other than that. It was looking for clarification because information isn't coming to the state as portfolio holders, you. Would be the first of that um liaison to provide the information. Because the informa- or that there were conversations that had been had. With the portfolio holder, but it's the portfolio holder's responsibility to relay that to the council. That part did not happen. And so when I reached out for more information. That's what that email was. So that that was the. And I think that that's wonderful, where the chief came up and said, okay, how, because. We then had a discussion, how can we streamline some of this, so everybody's becoming aware of things going on, so we don't have these situations. But I personally believe that uh. If I can. Have department head meetings, that there's no issue that would keep me from emailing. Said department head to ask a question.
Okay.
That's all, so I don't know if councils have been bringing it on that.
And it kind of sounds like. While I may have a bit of a disagreement with the following of that policy, the the council as a majority feels that there isn't any issue in. And how this took place, so. I guess that's probably can continue moving forward.
And I just want to reiterate, right, we all have rules, we all follow the rules, right, chain of command is huge. And we should be um following that, right, so maybe next time a heads up, maybe like, hey, I have a question, I'm going to email. May- maybe it will help to, the waters over um her situation. I think it's it's wonderful, if we get to the portfolio section of our meeting, that um we shared. What is going on in this portfolio, so the others and whatever it is. Uh, we're all aware, the. Uh, so the portfolio holder is one vote, one person. It's the council that makes those decisions. For the whole. All right, anything else on that?
I'll do so.
All right, item number fourteen, attorney report.
Um, I don't have any update. I've got several things that we're working on, but I'll hopefully have for update at the next meetings.
Short and sweet tonight. All right, is there uh any updates for? The uh portfolios?
On Monday, Public Works is um. We have some interviews, there's currently two open positions and three people have applied. And um the interviews will be taking place in the afternoon, which will be able to attend to.
Let me know when, and I.
This coming Tuesday, Brandon with Public Works will be testing for his other three water distribution certification, and Terry is testing for his own one wastewater certification. I'll be working with Public Works to develop a timeline, and it was dropped last time, we had especially from the word code, the target environment quality. And um there were some corrective actions needed, not necessarily by the existing. With government agencies, if you're doing things that you don't have record of it, or you don't have the procedure or standard operating procedure in place, and they're doing it. It never could. So we just need to get those documents generated, hope we're able to see. Maybe there's some existing documents for the uh MS four stormwater audits, or or stormwater. Testing and training that we can put in place versus starting from scratch. So we're going to address those corrective actions and make sure we're on the state's timeline and getting those done. Um, on there. Their schedule. Um, and then also Public Works would like to see if there's any injection from council to the department taking. Vacation day for the day after Thanksgiving with one person on the call.
Um, our office is already doing the same, so I don't know, our office is not, that was just. So office is open Friday? And it's it's a half day? So I I, well, I I think uh I would propose to close the office on Friday, and that's probably first close on Friday. I don't see any issue with that at all.
I have no objection.
There's no school anyway, so. You know?
People travel, it's just.
Right, right, well, for all of them, yeah, so Public Works and City of Lincoln closed on Friday? After the day after Thanksgiving?
Well, um, it sounds as though Public Works was suggesting that with somebody on call, so I I think it's maybe a good idea to. You know, consider that on-call piece.
Does still have an on-call for Public Works?
Yeah, I mean, that's a base password, right?
Correct.
Yeah, we have a person on call twenty-four seven, so there's always somebody on call.
Is there a particular way that somebody contacts the person that's on call?
We have an on-call number.
Uh, so do we have to make an emotion for? We did it on the. Right, we just have to skate it, and write it down on, I've written it down, wow, there it is. It's great, we have that public. If uh city auditor then can have that posted. And we will like, we'll shake on hosted Friday after Thanksgiving. Is there anything else that you have?
I would say for the public safety portfolio, um. It, as the topic of what the original email was on that last. Uh, a police officer in the Lincoln Police Department was promoted by the chief to a sergeant position to help out with. Um, of the paperwork and stuff like that, that the chief had been going through. There is no change to the police department's budget at the time for payroll or anything like that, but it sounds like. Um, at least some people would prefer that there's more discussion regarding. How the promotions go within the department, um, as far as who all approves them, so. There there will be some more discussions here in the future, um, to make sure everybody's on the same page for how we want that to. There be going forward, so.
Perfect, sufficient.
Oh, okay, I'm just, I was surprised to hear that, uh. I understood that. Chief Ginnings had said when I had held that portfolio, that there was no need for sergeant.
At the time he felt that, but he said that uh the paperwork and the administrative side of things. Have increased pretty drastically over the last year, and so he was looking for somebody to help take on some of those tasks.
And did that start after last meeting right away, or is that not in fact yet, or when does that?
It's in fact it took place, I I would have to get the exact date, it was around the time of our lesson. I don't remember the exact time, but I can.
When did they put things that? Would concern. Uh, me because of what had happened previously. Is that. Position. Not to being then a patrol officer and being more administrative staff. And I think that was one of the concerns um that was addressed initially, currently on Brown. This are talking or Councilwoman Arshavieh, I apologize.
Could you restate?
The concern about more time in. The department and less time control.
Well, I guess my. My recollection or what I'm recalling right now is just. A conversation about their not needing to be a sergeant. And I know in the past that was an issue uh previously, so. If that answers your question?
Yes. I think it, I think it's a good conversation to have when uh. In a recent meeting that department has. And I had, we had talked about. You know, is is council to ensure that council. Not necessarily as part of the approval process. But. Knowing, because we are a small community, it it's not like we have forty thousand people living in town. And and people ask us questions, if we don't know that we've got new staff or retirees or or things like that, it just makes for an uncomfortable conversation. So how do we rectify that, and do we want to have? You know, if it's a supervisory position, or if if is a position that would work hand in hand with council. That council be included. Or at least provided an opportunity to sit on that panel or be involved in or in the room. For that, just to start with that, or learning about the person that should be working hand in hand with. Not so much for those. The other positions. In not a supervisory role, so maybe, you know, as the con- the conversations continue. Think about that and what role as portfolio holders you want in those assesses.
And if the council would like, uh, Chief Ginnings had responded to Mayor Bergman's email. With an explanation of his reasoning behind the promotion, I can definitely forward that on to the rest of the council.
I did uh attack them or MPO this last week. It is nice to hear they're taking a look and have forwarded to GOT. A proposal for a roundabout at Apple Creek Road and sixty-six that. If approved, will not. Be fruition until twenty twenty-nine. I think more twenty-nine, twenty-nine, uh, and that is separate from the one up on Yagan and Lincoln Road, so. We have. Instead of the four-way subway. Roundabout, which might aid in some of that food, which is so.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, what is, what is the timeline for the Yagan Road one?
That one is twenty-eight.
Okay.
So and uh we also did approve. At that meeting, the transportation, the safety transportation uh for the Park District. And that uh brand that entered through that. Is excited that we'll continue on providing, so. Very much so.
Do you know is the um already agreed sentence and grant agreement in the city, so the next step?
I believe that that we have to come through. The park district. Out. Yeah, it it was just a couple of days ago. And uh. First of all, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, it's. Good read next week. For wastes, but after we have the Thanksgiving meal on. Black Friday, just as a reminder, Mandan Holiday Lights, the grand lighting is that following on that Friday night, six P M. And I have it on good authority that there will be a special guest in its flight. There, so I I have been to for quite some time, I never even knew about this event, so. Be fun, but. And that is takes place where? It's on Down Street, that main street lighting. Okay. Mandan Library. Right, right. So. I I'm excited to go to partake in that, but uh see nothing else, I don't know. We will call the meeting adjourned at eight forty-fourth. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.